I haven't seen him asked to join yet. I shot him an email with the Zoom info. So hopefully he should be able to log on any moment now.
Well, we can get started, I think.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay.
So I can start. I'm Andrew McNichols, Staff Planner for the Town Hall of Reading. Thank you all for joining us as we host our first ZBA zoning Board of Appeals hearing over these remote measures and through the Zoom program. So please bear with us as I'm sure we're all on a learning curve. For those of you who haven't used Zoom before, just to share some of the measures. In the bottom left of the corner, there's a mute and video function. You can use that to mute yourself and also unmute yourself to talk. I also have the ability to mute everybody and I ask that applicants who aren't ready to discuss yet. And if it's not their turn, please mute yourselves to avoid any background noise. And then as we get to your applications, we can unmute, of course, unmute yourselves and go that way. There's also a raise hand feature. If you see on the bottom list, there's a participants button. If you click that, that should give you the ability. You should see a button that says raise hand. So that will let me know that you have something to say on the screen. And I can then unmute you and allow for your comment, just so we can try to keep it organized and efficient. So please do use that function. And if you have any problems, of course, you can always just try to speak out. But please do wait your turn. I would like to add that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on RCTV. And that we have three applications tonight before us. So we can get the, sorry. The way this will work for each application is that we'll try to keep it as close to normal as possible. Where Psy will roll call each board member if asking if they have a, any questions or comments on the given application. And that board member can then speak to the applicant. So, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond, open to public comment. Who will, everyone will use the raise hand feature. And then we will go back to the board for a roll call vote. Where Psy will again call the member to vote on the application, yea or nay, if we get to that point. Because I would like to add that the town of Reading has a set of protocols. And what we're trying to follow is best practices right now. And what we'd like to ask for each applicant is that we would like to continue these meeting, this meeting tonight again. Just in case there are any technical difficulties or anyone that wants to comment and cannot. At least after the meeting, they will be able to provide some comments to us. Because again, this is our first meeting held remotely for the zoning Board of Appeals. And we just want to give everyone a fair chance to be involved, although there is a high number of people here, which is great to see. So thank you all for joining. Our zoning board members include Chairman Psy Cowett, Vice Chair Eric Hagstrom, Nick Pernice, Hillary Matiev, Jamie Mon, and Robert Redfern. So with that, I will give it off to Psy for some of his introductory statements.
Excuse me, Andrew, just before you do. I'm an associate member normally, but in how is that going to work tonight? Do we have a quorum?
We do have.
Is Hillary, Hillary is now a full member, correct?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, so which of us will be voting? Not that it matters, but.
So.
If Bob Redford is not on the video on the meeting line, then you will be a voter.
Right. So it's typically Psy, Bob, Nick, Eric. And then we haven't filled our full time, so we'd need an associate typically to vote anyways. But if Bob is not here, both Jamie and Hillary will be voting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay, can we get started?
We can. I will just also add that I have the ability to share my screen. And I will be sharing a number of materials with everybody's just to make sure we are all looking at the same thing, if it helps. Jamie?
Are we ready?
I believe so.
Okay, as Andrew said, my name is Psy Cowett. I'm the chairman of the zoning board. And we have three cases before us this evening. I will officially call the meeting to order at this time. And the first case on the agenda is case nineteen dash twenty-one or sixty-one Summer Avenue. This is a case that was opened, believe it or not, back in September of last year. And continued for two times until this evening. The petitioner, Mr. Daniel Prinsek, has requested a withdrawal of his application without prejudice. So I don't think there's much to discuss here with this. Unless Mark or anyone wants to make a comment relative to this that presents something we don't already know. If that's the case, if that's not the case, I would move forward with a motion from one of the board members to accept the petitioner's request for withdrawal without prejudice.
Mark has his hand raised, so go ahead, Mark.
Yes, just for the board's information, I was called out to the site. It's a couple of months ago now. They did remove that portion of the deck. And then they did supply a new certified plot plan showing that the remaining portion of the deck meets the fifteen foot setback. So there's, there's no longer a violation.
Good, good.
Great.
Any other comments from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion to with, to accept the petitioner's request for a withdrawal without prejudice. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Eric. Or a second?
This is.
Hi, Bob. Hey, how you doing? Made it.
Just in the nick of time.
Okay.
I didn't hear a second.
Nick second.
I think, I think, thank you. I think Nick did.
The voting members on this will be Bob Redford, Eric, Nick, myself, and Hillary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sounds like it's five oh.
Yes.
Motion is accepted. Okay. I think the next case is case twenty dash oh-two. Thirty Vale Road. I'll read the legal notice. The zoning Board of Appeals will open a public hearing through remote and online measures on Wednesday, June third at seven thirty, although we're doing it a little sooner, on the application of Mr. Ed McCormick pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Paragraph nine, for a special permit under Reading zoning bylaw, Sections five point three point two and five point four point seven, to construct an attached accessory apartment contained within new construction of a single family home at the property located at thirty Vale Road in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abutters lists, except to say that the abutters were notified as well as the select board, town clerk, police department, fire department, building department, conservation commission, health department, assessors office, engineering division, CPDC, members and associate members of the zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Lindfield, North Reading, Stonem, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath. So if any of you think you may want to speak on this case this evening, please raise your right hand at this time. And you will respond with, I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. The answer is, I do. Okay.
I do.
Thank you, Nancy.
Here. Okay, I, I think Mr. McCormick, I think, is here. Is he not?
He is here. Yes, yes. But it's actually, yes.
Then I guess either he or you, Nancy, we would ask to take the floor now or take the video.
That's right, exactly.
It depends on what you are asking from us this evening.
That's correct. I'm the spokesperson for, I'm the architect Nancy Toomey for this project. I don't know, Andrew, will you put drawings up or do you want me to share my screen, whatever?
I can share the screen. I have them up.
That would be great. This project is adding a, a portion of the apartment to an existing raised ranch. So on these drawings, I think it's really clear if we talk about it. The apartment, it's as a raised ranch. I don't know if you know that term. But the first floor is a slab on grade and would be considered the basement, except that it happens to be not a basement. It's fully above ground. And then the second floor is the living quarters typically. So downstairs is usually a garage and then a family room and upstairs is the kitchen and the bedrooms. In this particular case, we are adding on a small addition, eleven feet out towards an easement. And then it comes forward thirty-two feet and then across and sort of hugs the front of the existing house to make a front porch. Yes, here you go. So you can see the red is the addition. So eleven thirty-two and then twenty-three out. Then we've taken part of the existing structure to make the complete apartment. As you know, this project was on the docket back in March. And to keep the process moving, we did get, I just wanted to let you know, we did get an, a permit to start the construction without a, you know, without making it into an apartment. So it's simply a structure that anyone could add on to their house. It's two stories upstairs. Andrew, if you want to go forward to the, the drawings for the architecture, yeah. But keep going, one more page, I think. There you go.
So that's existing.
Yeah, lower level, you can see there was an existing garage, an existing bedroom and a bathroom. And if you go to the next page, there is the second floor, which has the kitchen and three bedrooms and a family room. And the next page will show you what we did on the first floor. So this is the apartment space. We took over the garage. We use the same bathroom. And we have a living area and a potential kitchen. So we were able to get a permit just for the structure itself. It completely conforms with all of the zoning bylaws. And what we didn't do was, if you see where the laundry is, we have not done that portion. So it is open to the main level and we have not put the kitchen in as of yet. And it's still under construction. It's still framed. If you go to the next page, you'll see the second floor and the extension on the second floor. So you'll see that we extended a master bedroom and we added, and by that extension, we added another bedroom. So it's still three bedrooms on the second floor with a nice master bath. If you go to the front, keep going, Andrew. There's the front elevation. So you can see that the door to what we hope will be the apartment is, you can't see, you can see the main door. And there is a gable over that entry. And the lower level that comes forward is where the living area is. And the next elevation, just so everybody can see, that's the side where the driveway is. To the right would be the kitchen upstairs are the two, the two bedrooms. And then the last is the back elevation. And, oh, nope, we left the back. There you go. And that's the back door. There's two back doors, one for the main house. Because the front entry is at the front. This is the back for egress. And then for the apartment, the door is off the side at the front where that front entry is. And this is the second means of egress at the back. So our, our goal is to make this an accessory apartment. It is going to be less than a thousand, it's going to be about a thousand square feet is when, when the addition has been completed, the entire principal dwelling will be approximately thirty-two sixty, three thousand two hundred and sixty gross square feet of finished inhabitable space. The accessory apartment will be about nine hundred and sixty-eight gross square feet of habitable space, which is less than the allowed thousand square feet and less than one-third of the principal dwelling. And then in our application, we went through all of the standards that Reading has set forth in the zoning bylaws. And of course, these are our opinion and we hope that you agree. But there's only going to be one accessory apartment. It's a completely separate unit with one bedroom, one bathroom and a kitchen. And then it meets the zoning bylaws in terms of square footage. The McCormick family will be living on the main single family area up on the second floor, which is traditional for a raised ranch. And the appearance of the home still remains that of a single family dwelling with a clear front door and then access to the porch, to the apartment is off of the porch to the side. All stairways will be located within the main house. And there is plenty of driveway access on the side as it is currently. There is an easement on the property, so we do not encumber that easement. We are out of, outside of that easement. But that is where the driveway is and will continue and be expanded. And then all the utilities will of course be part of the main principal dwelling. Well, that's what I have for you.
Thank you, Nancy. I will look. Mark, do you have any comment to offer at this time?
Not at the moment.
Thank you. Then I'll turn to the board members for any comments they may have relative to what has been presented and what we have reviewed. Now go to, I'll start with Bob. How, Bob Redford?
Yes, yes. How you doing, Psy? Good. A question, a question I had in, it, it looks like the, all the renovation, the expansion of the house and everything else all needs zoning setbacks. And I don't think they, you know, they've already received a permit for that, for that construction. And so, right, so, so what they're looking for is a special permit as an accessory apartment use. Question, Nancy, the parking is all going to be on the east side of the structure now in the driveway that is going to be on top of that sewer easement. And I, right, and I, I assume Mark can maybe comment on this a little later when he gets a chance. But I assume even though it's a sewer easement, it can be paved over in that area and parking can be done there. And how many vehicles will they be parking there? Do you know, Nancy?
We're showing three on the site plan right now. So two for the main house and then one for.
One for the apartment.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Other than that, those were my only questions. Other than that, it, it appears to me that they've met all the criteria for an accessory apartment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Eric?
If I can just add, first Stephen, we're going to open to public comment just after the board speaks.
Right.
So we'll let the board go first and then we'll open to public comment.
So I'll turn to Eric at this time.
Yeah, I, I took a look. It seems like a very straightforward project, exactly, you know, what we had, you know, as a town intended with the bylaw. I don't see any problem with it.
Thank you. Comment, Nick?
Thank you. So yeah, the applicant appears to meet all the performance standards. I think it especially retains the appearance of a single family home. I don't see any issues with this application. Thanks.
Thank you. Hillary, how about you?
I'm repeating what Nick and Eric said before. I think it looks, it's a very attractive addition. And it meets the zoning requirements. I don't see a problem with it.
Thank you. I feel the same way about it. I think the presentation was very good. I think the material that was provided was good. They walked us through all the criteria of five, four, seven, three. And I, I can't see where it's anything but satisfactory. So unless there's any further comments from the board at this time, I would like to open up this meeting now to public input. Is there anyone here on the meeting this evening that would like to talk?
Psy, if you don't mind, I did have a couple of questions.
Okay, sorry about that, Jamie.
That's all right. And Andrew, we, we've already exchanged some emails about this. But I thought that the percentage increase in square footage of the, of the structure was based on the square footage of the structure prior to zoning. I think it was nineteen sixty-two. Because if I remember correctly during town meeting, the, the issue was if it could be a percentage of unexpanded residents, you could just go in and expand the residents and expand the residents and then take the thirty percent or thirty-three percent. Am I, am I wrong? That date is not in there?
So in our accessory apartment standards for the special permit, there's no such standard for that. We do have a clause in the use table, let me pull it up, that was modified within the year or two. That was for the conversion of a dwelling. So I don't know if that's what you could be referring to, but we don't have that standard for accessory apartments. And there is a bit about barn carriages and accessory apartments, but it's still different.
Okay, so just my other, only other question. So any accessory apartment requires a approval by the ZBA? Is that correct?
No.
Yes.
Yes, all accessory apartments, just for the use.
If I could add a little bit in that, Jamie, if the house is existing and you're not adding on. So in other words, if there's a basement that meets all of the criteria, because the house is already that three thousand square feet, then by right with approvals by the building official, you can get an accessory apartment in that space without having to go before the zoning board. So if it's existing space, you, you don't need a special permit from the zoning board.
But anytime there's new construction to create that accessory apartment, then it requires ZBA approval. Is that, is that correct?
I have interpreted it that, I mean, another way to think about this is we could have, and we started the process, we could add on, it meets all zoning bylaws, finish that space, then I could have gone back. It would be more expensive because we now have to undo some of the things that we've finished and asked for a, an accessory apartment because then now, now the space exists. So there is a little bit of feedback in there that one has to think about. I personally, when I advise clients, want this to be open so that the neighbors can see what we're doing. And you all have an idea of what's going on in terms of apartments. But there is a back door, if you, if you will. I mean, I could add a big family room to my house, for example, and not finish the basement, then come back by right and ask the building apartment to approve a permit to finish that basement into an apartment.
So there, there, there is a loophole in, in the bylaw that could allow what, what you just, what you just described.
Yeah, and I wouldn't say it's a loophole. I think it's just a matter of interpretation. I mean, I'm sure that when the bylaw was, I don't know, maybe someone who was on the bylaw committee could comment on this. But my assumption is that we're trying to encourage this type of structure happening in this town to help with parents coming and living with their children or vice versa, children coming home from college and needing a place to stay. It's a great way to increase the types of, of residences that we don't have in this community. So I think that was the intent. In fact, that's what the bylaw says at the beginning. And, and, but there has to be a way to do that equitatively. And, you know, just because you have a huge house, you shouldn't be allowed to only have the apartment. It should be, anyone should be able to have that apartment if they meet certain criteria. And there might be lots in Reading and houses in Reading that can't be expanded.
Right, and, and you're absolutely correct. When this came before ten meeting, that was the intent to allow this exact, exact use and also increase a way to increase density of development without, without a lot of new construction. Thank you.
Mark, do you have any comment on this subject?
I, I raised my hand, but Nancy raised hers first.
Sorry.
No, I was basically going to answer the, the question about the, you know, doing an in-law apartment in the, the existing residence. But Nancy answered finally, and that's pretty much all correct.
Okay, good. I did, uh, open it up to public comment. Is there anyone on the Zoom, in the Zoom meeting participating who wants to make comment on this case?
Can hand off to Steve Lucero, who first had his hand raised.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I, I think it looks great. My only concern would be like the parking. I've lived here for over five years. And I think that the big part of the, the parking availability was they had the garage before. And my concern is, again, it sounds, with three cars, that's fine, but it doesn't look like it's a lot of parking for multiple family members.
Thank you. Any other comments? To speak.
Um, hi, my name is May Moscarello. I live on Woodward Ave, but our back door is on Vale. I have the same, hi Nancy.
Hi, hi, May.
I have the same issue, actually. I have a few issues. We already know about the sewer line. I know that that's been a great concern for many of us in the neighborhood, making sure that that is not impacted. That goes underneath and out to Vine. And also the car problem. There's a, there's a, this driveway is very narrow. So putting three cars out in the driveway, you know that there's going to be at least two on the street every day. And I'm not in agreement with getting that congestion around that corner. That's a corner. There's a lot of children in that that ride their bikes. This is a very children friendly neighborhood. And it's a very dangerous, you know, it's very congested in that corner. Steve, you would agree with me on that, right?
Yeah, absolutely. That's my main concern. I mean, I, to be honest, I think it'd be tough to get three cars in there right now, but you could probably do it. And I have two young children. I'd hate to have a situation where either one of them were, you know, in a bad situation.
Yeah. I also have a problem with the whole concept of the ADU. I knew nothing about this being granted in our town of Reading and being passed. To me, it's a, it's a fancy name for a two family. And many of us are in disagreement with having a two family in our neighborhood. We thought that this neighborhood was zoned for single family only. And the fact that they had to build up, like, we have a, we have a quite a large home, but we would never even think about putting an apartment in our, in this neighborhood. We would go someplace where there are apartments in neighborhoods. So I'm not in agreement with any of it. And the fact that they added on to get it big enough so that then they could go back and, and call it an ADU. They had to put the addition on the house to make it big enough, right, Nancy? Or did Nancy get off?
No, I'm, I'm here. No, the, the addition on the house is not to make it big enough for the apartment, but to make it large enough for upstairs and for their.
Correct.
Yes.
What happened?
I just wanted to bring up the plot plan for not Nancy to respond.
Yeah, um, without parking, one of the things I wanted to point out here, it's hard to see the cars on here, but the driveway has twenty feet across in order to park. So you could park four cars here very easily. And, and it's widened out. So it, it is in this, this whole area is the driveway. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's not a narrow driveway. You can see where it is right now. It's been widened to accommodate the four cars. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's not a narrow driveway. You can see where it is right now. It's been widened to accommodate the four cars.
I don't see that happening.
Yeah, I don't. There's no way that that's wrong. I mean, I've lived here for five years. There's no way you could fit four cars here.
I need to ask a question. I'm Pete Moscarello, May's May's husband. Hello, Nancy. So I just want clarification on this. We know that addition is for an ADU for for in-laws. We understand that. But the bylaws allow for the current owner to sell the house, someone else buy and use that ADU as rental property, essentially two-family.
Which we're not in agreement with.
And Nancy, who knows this neighborhood?
I know I do.
That's a change of that's a change of neighborhood. That's a real different flavor when you have a two-family in the midst of this very beautiful residential
Single family.
A single-family neighborhood.
Let me make just a little clarification between two-family and and
Nancy, can you turn up your volume?
I'll get closer.
All right.
Better. That there's one thing about the bylaws that is important to remember with an accessory apartment is that the owner has to occupy the principal dwelling. Where a two-family could be rented, both units could be rented, and the owner does not have to live there in an accessory apartment. The owner has to live there. That's part of the bylaws. And it also is it it's I I Andrew, do they have to put this into the deed restriction that the I think there's a deed. I can't remember what the process is, but I think
Yeah, I'm not sure about that process, but yeah, an owner must live on the property, whether it's in the principal or accessory apartment.
Andrew, so part of that process is, thank you for that clarification, Nancy. Let's say the current owners sell and a new owner comes in, occupies the main part of the house and rents it to non-relative. Do they have to go through a process, an appeal, or get permission from the the zoning board or anyone else to say now this is rental property, it's not just in-law apartment?
Um, we it would go on an application basis. We haven't seen anything like that have come across our desk just yet. The bylaw is fairly new, and we are aware of those concerns, and it is on our list to try to get in front of that. But with the bylaw being fairly new, we're still learning how it's playing out ourselves, so.
Does the board members kind of note our our concern, our objection? There you guys have been around a while. We've been in this town for sixty-five years, so.
Yeah, we 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 certainly agree with you, your concerns. But Nancy, I think it's been perfectly said. If somebody wanted to sell the house and and then rent that section by the house and rent that section forward, in my opinion, they would have to come before this board to get that approved. And frankly, I don't think it would happen. I approve. But that remains to be seen. But I what they what they're doing now is in full compliance with the requirements for an accessory apartment per the existing bylaws. Now, when we went through this thing, when the town meeting went through this this whole bylaw change, they made they added a lot into it relative to accessory apartments. And is is the bylaw currently perfectly written on this subject? Maybe not. Comments like you people make during the course of some of these cases that come before us may well get reflected back in there for future changes. But right now, as the bylaw is written, they are compliant, and that's what we're ruled on, okay? But the comments are well taken from all of you, and because we certainly understand your concerns. And so any other comment here, Mark, or anybody else?
I believe Steve has another comment. If we can go back to Steve, if he's still here.
Steve?
Are you referring to me?
I you do have your hand up as well, and you have had your hand up, so.
I don't have any more comments, so.
Great. Other Steve, sorry, did you have any comments?
So I've lived here for twenty-five years, and I always figured Reading is a, you know, a single-family. I was raised here. I've been here since nineteen seventy. We bought this neighborhood knowing it's a single-family neighborhood. I totally disagree with this decision. I definitely want some kind of assurance that it won't be a two-family after it's all done. So I don't think a ruling should be done until it's confirmed. And all a meeting should be held before and let us know what the what it is, because this is not an open forum. This is a Zoom video. So I'd like to see something more concrete known by the town lawyers or whatever to to get this nailed down, that if it's a can be a two-family after it's sold.
Okay, thank you. I lost somebody here. Oh, here we are.
Oh, I got your back. Okay.
Okay, I guess we're all back.
So we do. Thank you for the comment. We do understand the concerns. A special a special permit can be transferred, and Mark might have some more on this, but those perform the performance standards we're reviewing today must be met for any transference of a special permit as well. So it's always reviewed. So we do try to be as on top of it as we can.
Well, we get notification like a null and meeting before that happens, so we all know what's going on.
If they triggered the special permit criteria to come before zoning board again. But again, that's on a we'd have to see an application for that.
Okay, so we'll know like, how how are we supposed to know if it can be transferred to a two-family?
It cannot become a two-family without a variant. So two-family is a different use. The accessory apartment has the specific performance standards laid out and maximum, what we'll call maximum square footage of the thousand square feet, so they can't exceed that and become a two-family. We have the performance standards to maintain the one-front door, so it appears single-family. We've worked hard on these, and it's gone fairly well, so.
So it's so it is so it is confirmed that it can't be turned into a two-family at this point?
That is true. It will remain an accessory apartment.
Okay, so any I can buy houses in Reading, move into it, and buy it and put an apartment for my daughter in the in there.
You meet the special permit criteria and the accessory apartment criteria, you can.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up on that the gentleman's point. Steve's point. We we say two-family in your as opposed to the owner lives there and rents out the apartment to a family or non-family member. That is not considered to a two-family. That's that's I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So Andrew, new family buys a house, lives in the main park, rents the ADU to stranger. Is that a two-family or is that still an ADU situation?
Um, I would have to, again, probably defer until that happens, because if they are still meeting the criteria, there's really nothing we can do. But if they had, if they were, it's not a two-family. I just want to stress that is that a two-family is a different use. It's a different structure than an accessory apartment has built different standards, code standards, building standards, zoning standards. So I can assure you it won't become a two-family. Can I assure you they can't rent it out as an accessory apartment or an Airbnb? I cannot give that assurance at this moment.
Yeah, that stinks. That's cool. They can rent it out, have an Airbnb, someone else can buy the property, and then they can do an Airbnb with downstairs, and you don't know from one week to the next who's coming in and out of there.
I agree, and we have taken these comments at a lot of hearings, and we are definitely trying to be on top of that as well as we can.
It's too bad you passed this law is what I'm saying.
So one more time, Andrew, if a new owner comes in and lives in the main house and rents the 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 unit, do they have to get permits, permission, all that through the ZBA? Or you say, no, it's already in compliance of just what it is now, and
You know, my comment on that, sir, is that if someone buys the house and then rents it out to someone else, that makes it a two-family residence.
Okay.
Now, that means they have to come before this board for approval to do that. Now, we all know we live in a world where people do things behind the scenes.
Right.
And that's entirely possible. I understand that. But there, you know, who's the best policeman on the block?
Yeah, but we don't want to be the policeman.
Bring that to the attention. No, but you would if you saw that happening, you'd bring it to the attention of the town, would you not?
So I would just like to bring this discussion back to the specific application before us. If we would like to discuss these accessory apartment zoning bylaw, we can do so at a different meeting and put it as a topic or talk to you offline. But I just want to get back to the application in front of us, if that's okay.
Right.
Is there any other comment from?
Kathy has her hand up. Kathy's fired.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can. Could I just have your name and address, please?
It's Kathy Dunn, Seventeen Vale Road.
Got you. Thank you, Kathy.
Right. So Nancy, I think what you did you say that the utilities, they don't have their own separate utilities?
That's correct. This apartment is off of the main house's utilities. That's one of the requirements for an accessory apartment. So there isn't
So if somebody tried to rent it to somebody that doesn't live in the house, basically, they would have to share the utilities.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's part of the accessory bylaw. It has to be the same utilities. It can't put a separate meter in. That would make it a two-family.
Okay, and then just one other question. Sorry, to to even have ADU, you have to start with three thousand square feet, or do you have to have a certain amount of rooms, livable space?
There's there's two distinctions. In in an ADU, you need a minimum of three thousand square feet in order to be able to. Well, that's not true. I'm sorry. That's not true. Yeah, for a maximum size apartment, it has to be one-third of the existing square footage. So if you had a house that was less than three thousand square feet, the apartment would then be smaller than the thousand square feet, but still be able to be an apartment, in other words. So but to maximize the square footage for an apartment, you can imagine if you had a a small house, you could have a small apartment, but that apartment would be just a single room, and that's sort of global. The number of rooms comes into play. If you have an older house, I've forgotten what the age of the house is, and it has more than, I think it's eight rooms, that's the two-family bylaw that allows you to make a two-family out of one of the older houses.
Okay, all right. I I thought I saw something about number of rooms or square feet when I was looking at the bylaw. So it's basically something we passed in running in twenty fifteen that allows any house to attempt to do an ADU if if you can fit it in. So thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Andrew.
Thank you, Nancy.
Any other questions?
Hello. Hi. Am I not on here? We can hear you, but your your face isn't on. Oh, okay. All right, Andrew. I have a question for you. It's my name's Chris Cody. I live at Sixteen Vale Road.
Yep.
Again, I just want to clarify. So there's no real guarantee that accessory apartment right now, they meet the bylaws, so therefore it exists. But there's no guarantee that once somebody moves out of that apartment, as long as the owner and say it's a new owner, lives in the apartment, that anybody, they could they could essentially rent that apartment to anybody without anybody knowing about it except for us. And then we would trigger that by going to the town again.
So somebody would know whether it's an assessing, planning, building. Somebody would know, so we would take it up then, and what courts of action would follow suit.
Okay, how would you know? But somebody would like sell the house, buy the house, and then bring Joe Schmoll to Ragnon.
I don't know. There is no real distinction between, like I said earlier, I can't really guarantee that this
Right, there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee.
Okay, when this, excuse me, my name is Peter Foddy. I'm Christine's husband. We live on Vale Road as well. When this project first came to us, it came to us as an in-law apartment. We were all for it. You know, we thought that was a great thing, you know, that but it doesn't sound like it's like it's an in-law apartment. Now, it sounds like it's a it's a potential I mean, there's no question it's going to increase the value of the of the house. And there's no question when the time comes when these folks sell it, they're going to be showing it as an opportunity for revenue. I mean, there's no question about it.
I can only add that it's not a two-family. It's a distinct difference in the town of Reading bylaws.
That's too bad. But it really is, as Si someone rents the apartment, you're considering, because they're making money from it, that it's a two-family, even though it's considered an accessory apartment because it fits the bylaw of less than thousand square feet.
So we should
I can't hear you.
We missed our opportunity when we did the definition of where an ancillary apartment is.
So yes, for anything to change with the performance standards of accessory apartments, it would have to be going through town meeting as a zoning change.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so this
Great, Kathy.
Sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, go ahead, Peter.
Oh, it might so my my only other my only other question is this house started out as three thousand square feet. Is that correct, Nancy?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. No, the house did not start out as three thousand. When we had the entire addition completed, it is over three thousand. So it was just, it was like twenty-eight hundred, but they wanted to add more square footage to the second floor, which also helped us add more square footage to the to the lower level.
So so you took the existing house, you made it bigger, divided it, and took thirty-three percent of that and made an apartment that was how many bedrooms is this apartment?
One.
Okay, okay. But the existing structure was not big enough for you to create the apartment that that you thought was feasible, right?
Well, yeah, well, it has enough space to put an apartment in the basement, but it has to do a lot with how you get into the main house and how we get into what would be an apartment and how we get out of the main house. Because it's a raised ranch, the access to this lower level is their entrance and their exit. So in doing the apartment, we could have taken over the garage, I suppose, and the bathroom, but it isn't big enough to put in then enough ancillary spaces to make it into a livable apartment. They also wouldn't have been able to expand their second floor to gain a master bedroom, bathroom, which is part of the criteria. So so in all of these projects, you have to look at the entire picture. It worked out for their advantage. Also, from a a cost perspective, it worked out in their advantage to take over a portion of the first floor or the lower level and then add on a smaller addition that could become part of the apartment and allow them to expand their living space on the second floor. So from a confluence of of all, it it made a lot of sense from a cost perspective, budget perspective, and a square footage. So it's just a combination of all of that. I don't think that they intended when they first started out, actually, I know they didn't, to add on, but in doing the analysis of what it was that were their goals, it made more sense to build an addition than it did to try and recreate stairs and egresses for the second floor to be able to accomplish an apartment on the first floor.
May I ask you, how much of that addition space is used for this apartment?
For the apartment, I'd have to do the math, but eleven by thirty-two feet is the roughly, plus a little bit more that as it expands.
No, 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 that's not that wasn't my question. So
Oh, sorry.
The addition, but how much of the addition is used for the apartment?
How much of the addition is used for the apartment? It's just the lower level, and that's eleven by thirty-two roughly of the addition portion. Are you talking about the main house? How much of the existing house was used for the addition?
No, no, I I mean, I understand that we're using thirty percent of the, well, whatever the existing house is after you put the addition on it, right?
Right, right. Exactly.
We made the house bigger, and then we took thirty percent of it and we put, we made it an ancillary apartment, right?
That's correct.
Now, just keep, bear in mind, I have no issues with an in-law apartment at all. I think that's a great thing. But I do have issues with an ancillary apartment. I do. Also, and, and this is, this is something that the town's going to have to think about, everybody, guys. There's only one drain for this whole, that whole side of the street, and it's right in front of that driveway. So that's not that, I don't think, I don't know if that'll be a problem for parking or not, but there's only one drain in it, in this whole, this whole street on this side.
Yeah, the side that they're on.
Now, maybe, maybe none of this has anything to do with what we're talking about right now. I think the issue of the day is what happens when these good people move and sell their house? That's the question that we have.
And it is well.
Not just for the, our folks here in Vale Road, but it should be answered for, for everybody. You know, what is an ancillary apartment? When you say an in-law apartment, where, everybody thinks that's a good thing. In-law, what does it, you know, what does that mean? It means, you know, you're going to take care of your parents. It's great. But when, when you say ancillary apartment, what's, what's that? I mean, that's, an ancillary apartment by definition is that, is this, is a space that, that you rent, right? I mean, I know I have many rental apartments. It's a rental apartment, right? You rent them. So if we can't be protected in this, in this conversation, then we're going to have to be, I think, I would hope that we would have to at least have some dialogue going forward as to what we're going to do, you know, how we're going to handle.
So if I can just go to Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds, who have had their hands up?
Uh, thank you, Andrew, for acknowledging us. I appreciate it. And, uh, I appreciate my neighbors, uh, giving their, uh, not necessarily grievances, but, uh, opinions. And, uh, um, I agree with most of what, uh, they have said. Um, I have three or four things to add if I can remember them all. Uh, one of the things I want to discuss is, um, ironically, yesterday, they were doing some work on that, that sewer line, that easement that runs from Vale to Vine Street yesterday. And several of us had, um, some, I don't, I don't want to say backup in our sewer, but we had back pressure in our sewer that we were, it was actually noticeable on our toilets. So that, that is an issue going down the line. I realize there's at least three of us that have it, have an easement on that, uh, sewer line. So, I mean, that is something that I know, um, we have flooding that goes on in this area, especially in, uh, I'm surprised, I'm surprised Charles and Margaret are online, because they were very adamant about the flooding that is in that driveway that, uh, they're talking about, um, can fit three cars. I've never seen more than two cars in that driveway, um, much less four. And I understand, um, the Moscarallo's point about that being a bad corner, because there are a lot of kids. It could, kids come down that street from Vale, from Woodward, and on their scooters, on their bikes, and they take the corner, and it's, uh, you know, if that gets any more narrow, there's going to be problems. As far as the, the difference between the existing house and the new addition, um, I, I know we, uh, most of us that have done additions have used Nancy's. We're all familiar with Nancy. She does great work, and she shop is a tack. So, um, but the basement is a living space in that house, other than the garage. The garage is the basement or part of the basement, which is, you know, what, nine by eleven or whatever the, the, the depth of the basement is. My basement isn't considered a living space. Um, if I sell my house by square foot, it does not include the basement. So to include that, and I know that was kind of a, um, not necessarily a throw-in, but yeah, if we went and put, you know, a couple thousand dollars into the, into the garage, made it a living space, then you would have been able to move forward and do everything. And I think, um, you know, that might have been a little bit shady, not shady, that terrible, that's a bad sign, but a shortcut, um, is a better term. And for all intents and purposes, that addition is almost done. I mean, they're already plastering. I don't know, I haven't been in the house, but I, you know, we're right here. We've seen all the work. It's been going on for three months now. And, you know, if there's an area on the second floor that's not finished, because that's a technicality, um, it's pretty close to being finished. I think, from what I could see with the plasters and everything. So I, I'm just kind of curious on, as, as about, as far as the, being able to go from the, the required space to the, um, the actual space that they have now that's considered the ADU. And I also think that's kind of a shortcut is, why don't we call it an in-law apartment? Why is it going to be ADU? Like the, somebody else just said, if it was called an in-law apartment, there's not a person that would have a complaint about this. The issue is, if the house gets sold and another tenant goes in there, it's going to be turned into an apartment. That's what everybody has an issue with. And it's not zoned for that. And I know Si had said it would have to go in front of the board, it would have to be voted on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But whether it's a, a zoning change or, um, some other change, you've made at least two changes in the last year to make this possible. Not necessarily for our new neighbors, but for other people in general. So in another year or two, there's no, it's nothing to say, that's not going to happen anyway. So that's, that's my concern.
Thank you.
Well taken.
Are there any other comments from the public? Andrew, I don't see any, I can't see the hands raised, right?
Steve. There are a couple hands raised, I believe.
Yeah, Steve Key has had his hand raised, as well as Kathy.
Well, I just want to re-add that, you know, I don't like the idea of adding space on, and the meeting wasn't held before they were given approval to put that on. I know it's an old loophole, um, to get that project going quicker. And I know the board's all looking at it, saying it all fits criteria, but you're taking a neighborhood that, a house that existed, and you're just giving permission to do this across the whole town, that anybody's going to be able to do this now. I can go to any neighborhood, buy another house, and do this. And I just, I think for Reading, I think it's a terrible idea. Um, so again, I just don't approve of this. I don't like the idea. And I think it's kind of a backdoor, uh, way to play this, and, uh, kind of ruins our neighborhood, and I just don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others, Andrew?
Kathy, did you have any additional comments?
None.
Uh huh. Uh, so we can go back to the board, and I would like to stress again that per town hall, um, they have recommended that we continue these hearings, at least another hearing, in case there is anyone who has not joined or has had technical difficulties. And it's our first meeting back in two or three months, so, um, just want to stress that that has been relayed from town hall.
Okay. Yeah. I certainly understand the comments that many of the folks, uh, in the neighborhood made. And, uh, I can, uh, feel their anger and concerns, but we are dealing with the bylaws as they exist today, which draws a clear distinction between accessory apartments and two families. And, uh, maybe there needs to be forward discussion, uh, uh, with inputs from people like this, uh, to, to the town that could be factored into the discussion for future town meeting. But right now, we are dealing with the accessory apartments as they are defined in the bylaws today. But I will go back to, I'll close the portion of the, uh, meeting with the public, and I'll go back to the board. Is there any comments from anyone on the board? Or Mark, do you have any comments relative to all this stuff, before I go to the board members?
I'd have, I'd have a lot to say, but, um, the can of worms is kind of open and closed, and, um, I have no more comments at this time.
Thank you. Any comments from the board members?
No further comments, Si.
Bob, none? Anybody else?
I just had a, a, a question for Andrew. I'm not sure I understood what you said about continuing the meeting. So town council has advised that all committees continue meetings that are held on Zoom.
No, we in the planning.
Oh.
We in the planning department have felt that each public hearing should go twice, um, have two hearings. So we continued at least one more date so that we have a chance to digest all the comments and make sure everybody has an equal opportunity to provide comments. Notice was sent last week, but that doesn't mean that everybody got it or has access to this. So we just want to continue to make sure we're allowing for all the comments that we can.
Okay, so it would just be extended one more time?
Right.
And, and is that, is it your anticipation that as long as we meet on Zoom, if it's six months, that, that policy will remain effective?
Um, it's tough to say. I would think for now, yes. For in the short-term future, yes. Um, if this becomes a bit more of the norm, then we will rediscuss, um, but as for now, yes.
And just, um, just out of curiosity, are other boards and commissions following that same policy?
Uh, CPDC has been avoiding large-scale public hearing discussions and asking applicants to continue. We've been doing some small applications, sign applications and stuff, but even that only just got underway last month. So, um, we're all on the learning curve here.
So it's still a work in progress?
Yep.
Thank you.
We're all learning this Zoom procedure and how it affects how things done. Uh, but anyway, is there any additional comments at this point from?
Nancy has one.
If, if I could just talk a little bit about continuing this one more time, we have been waiting since March.
Yep.
So another continuance. I don't know when the next Zoom meeting will be scheduled, but I, I don't know what else we can bring to this meeting to make it continued. So I'm a little, I'm a little upset that that might be a consideration. It's, we waited a very long time already, and I, and it's, it's been a bit frustrating for that reason. Thank you.
I do understand, and we just ask that all applicants try to bear with us as we get our feet on the ground and get these public hearings started back up again in a fair and just way.
Will we be meeting on the, on the seventeenth?
We would. Um, as long as everyone's available, that was my recommendation, that we would continue to the seventeenth.
Okay. Is there any other comment from the board members? I heard from Bob.
I, just to follow up on that, so we would anticipate voting and approving or not approving on the seventeenth. I mean, I know that could change, but that is the anticipation, correct?
That is the anticipation.
Eric? Hillary? Nick, any comment?
The only thing I can think of is, you know, I, I totally appreciate, you know, what Nick and, you know, the town is saying about, you know, the notice and, um, you know, but if the applicant wants us to vote, I think we have an obligation to put it to a vote. And obviously, it's up to them if there's some sort of procedural challenge with it afterwards, but if they ask us to vote, I think we should vote.
Anybody else have any comment?
I, I would agree with Eric on that, uh, Si.
Yeah. I mean, if we had a, it's very clear, I think, from my listening to the comments of the board, that there's no problem with acting on this case this evening. Uh, and I, and I respect, uh, the comments of Nancy in that people have been waiting for a long time to get these cases reviewed. Uh, if it's a controversial case where there's some serious issues that command a continuance, I can understand that. But I don't get the sense that this case falls into that category based on the, listening to the discussion this evening. And I tend to endorse, uh, and agree with the comments that we should, I see no reason why we can't act on this case this evening.
Andrew, Andrew, a question for you, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Um, has, has it been made public that the meetings will be continued at least twice when they're on Zoom? I mean, is that understood by the, the citizenry in Reading? If so, then I think we should adhere to that.
Uh, that wasn't expressed in the legal, in the courtesy notice that we sent last week to the Butters, reminding them and notifying them that the hearing was now going to open tonight. Um, but it was just something that we as staff discussed and thought of to try to ensure we got as much comment as possible.
You know, Andrew, you know, Andrew, that there are three other cases hanging in the wings right now.
I do know.
Correct. And if we continue, these two cases would be dealing with five cases on the next meeting. Is that true? Correct?
Sorry, what was the question?
Would be, if we continue these, this meeting and the one following tonight to the next meeting, which right now appears to be June seventeenth, we could be acting and dealing with five cases.
There are no cases scheduled for the seventeenth yet. They haven't been legal advertised. They haven't been legal advertised. Um, it was, I intend to discuss with you tonight on hearing those in July, but I don't want to.
Okay, so those are pending cases that haven't materialized yet.
Correct.
Okay, so we would be, so what's, from the town's viewpoint, is the policy right now, the town wants us to continue these? Is that the right, is that the rule?
That is the town's recommendation. Um, it's not a mandated policy. It's not official documentation. It's just our recommendation. If you guys truly want to vote tonight, um, I do believe as stated, it is your right, so.
Okay. Does anybody on the board feel that we should not act tonight? Anybody? Any, any ready stands? Any comment?
I just want to go to Mr. and Mrs. Reynolds and then Steve Key again.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew and Si, for acknowledging, uh, acknowledging me. Um, you've said on four occasions that, uh, you are going to allow people that maybe had trouble on Zoom tonight, people that had, that maybe a difficult time tonight to be able to participate in this, this meeting. Uh, Margaret and, um, Charles, who are in a butter, who have had concerns. Apparently, they haven't been available to attend this tonight. Um, I think that, uh, in fairness to the neighbors, uh, this project has gone through. It's ninety-nine percent, or ninety-five percent already under construction. It's not like they had to wait for their permit. It's only two more weeks. Um, I don't, I don't understand the rush. I understand you're trying to do right by the, the, uh, the homeowner, but, um, there's other people involved as well. And I don't know why, what's the rush to, to rush it through tonight? You have two more weeks, and you just said, Andrew just said, you have nothing on the docket for the seventeenth. So this could be the very first thing on the seventeenth.
There is a comment in the chat section from a Charles. I don't know if you see that, Nancy, if you want to try to address it.
Let's see.
I don't see it.
Said, I thought accessory units could only be added when the addition wasn't being added on the front of the building, though it could be added on the side or rear of the building. No, um, entrance, entry-wise, side or rear, but.
Enters, entries-wise.
If, if I could just also make a comment on why we're waiting to get it done tonight. There, if, you know, obviously, you're not ordering a kitchen, we're not ordering the, the pieces that make this into an accessory apartment, because we don't have permission to do that. So if we are delayed two weeks, that means that those cabinets that have a ten-week lead time cannot be ordered. So we're pushing this project even further into the summer, and they would like to be able to take occupancy of this, including the in-laws, this summer. So that's, that's the delay. We, we had to start the project so that we could at least get this done, so that they could move in. And now we're at that critical junction where if they can't order the cabinets and they can't order the features that go into this apartment, then it's another two-week delay before they can get in. So that's the thought. That's, that's why I'm pushing a little bit, and, but you have the decision.
Okay. I am still in favor of moving forward on the decision this evening.
Believe we have one more comment. Si, if we can address Steve.
Okay.
So I agree also that, you know, this is not a public forum. This is Zoom. This is not accessible to everybody. There are older people in the neighborhood that don't have computers. They've owned the house since November. They didn't file for it until March. So they couldn't have been that much of a rush. So I think it should be held for the two weeks, like Jim was saying. For the town making a recommendation that it's not an open forum, I don't even know if this is actual legal forum for the Town of Reading. For the town making a recommendation that it's not an open forum, I don't even know if this is actual legal forum for the town of Reading. It's not a public forum. Not everyone's welcome because not everybody has computers. Some people don't have internet. So, you know, I basically look at you guys are just gonna railroad it right through and not give the answer.
We could wait, we could have a forum in the town hall, and we could probably be reviewing this thing next September.
Well, that's kind of ridiculous. That's kind of ridiculous.
Well, it is kind of ridiculous. It is. But people did have the opportunity to join in this evening. Now granted.
So everyone has a computer, everyone has internet.
Well, I will add that this was received in January and notified before the whole work from home order happened.
This this is not a public forum. This is Zoom.
So there have been measures made to allow for this through the current.
And what, on who's, who who decided this?
Avenue's, okay.
That that's not our town. That's that's being ruled by a governor. We're our own community. That's why we have a select board. Town meeting, town meeting should vote on it. It's not a, it's not a true forum. This is not a town forum. So thank you anyways.
To the noted. Nick?
I just want to say I'm in favor of voting this tonight. I don't see any reason why we need to delay this two more weeks. My understanding is this meets the open meeting law. It was advertised. If someone wants to submit a comment, all the avenues still exist. They could submit an email. They could write a letter. There's plenty of ways they could submit public comments. Most people, granted there are exceptions, have access to the internet, but I don't, I'm not aware of any memos, letters, or whatever of anyone voicing their concern that they weren't able to make this meeting tonight. So I would, I'm in favor of moving forward, and particularly, this seems like a pretty straightforward, uh, accessory apartment application that does meet all the performance standards. And while I do understand the public's concern that this can become a two family, for those who are generally concerned, I would really recommend that they read the zoning regulations. There's about a dozen standards that talk about how this is really not a two family. From the size, limited to a thousand feet, limited to three people, maintaining the appearance of a single family. The application does not automatically transfer it to the next owner. They still need permission. This is in here for good reasons. And while there are concerns that there may be a few bad apples that try to abuse it, I'm not concerned about that because there is recourse to address that. I'm worried about this application, and there is a public forum, and this can be discussed in other avenues. But I don't see any for any issues with this or moving forward on voting on this tonight. That's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the board that thinks we should continue this for the next meeting? Anyone? Then I will entertain a motion on this petition. Bob, you haven't done one for a while.
I will be happy to, uh, make a motion that, uh, we approve, that the board approve, uh, case number, if I can read it here in my light, uh, twenty dash zero three, for a approvals of a special permit for an accessory apartment.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Thank you.
I have a second from Nick.
And I, if I can just ask, so you do a roll call vote, so just ask each member individually.
Right. Mr. Redford? Yes or no?
I vote, yeah, yes.
Nick?
I vote yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Please ask Eric as a former member.
Yes.
Yes. And myself, yes. So it's five zero zero. It is approved. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Now, Andrew, will you have a stamped version of the drawings that we will have? I know that we will do that, so.
So we might have to go through a mailing process. Perhaps even I should connect tomorrow or early next week, Nancy, to review that process.
Sounds good. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
May, did you have a comment? Sorry, guys. Um, I don't know if it's too late to take Ms. May's comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that you read our, uh, to everybody. I I think it sort of encapsulates what the neighbors are feeling. We understand the board's concern tonight was approving and not approving the project as as it stands. You just did. And although we have some concerns like sewer and parking and things that were brought up tonight, I think the neighbor's bigger concern is what happens from here. And I know you answered that question, and I know we talked about two family versus rental property and all that. But what, no, we're really concerned that we all bought into this neighborhood.
Bought into this town.
Into this town, this neighborhood for a reason, and this looks like potential for substantive changes in the whole flow, the whole feel, the whole flavor of this beautiful residential neighborhood. And I mean, the neighbors have brought that up consistently, and we just need some type of assurance that, new owner can't come in, rental property, change the whole thing. We need some type of assurance from the board that there's gonna be a process where any new owner has to jump through a lot of hoops. The neighbor's gonna have a lot of input before, um, you allow this.
Many new owners will have to meet the same performance standards as the existing.
Thank you for your comment.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. We have one more case. That's it. On the board's agenda tonight, it's number court case twenty dash oh three, nineteen Auburn Street. I'll read the legal notice. Zoning Board of Appeals will open a public hearing for remote and online measures on Wednesday, June third at eight P M. Sorry, we're late. On the application of Jeffrey and Kristen A. Born, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Paragraph, or Section ten, for variance under Reading's zoning bylaw, Sections four, five, two, and seven, four, as may be determined by the zoning board, to construct a new farmer's porch on a non-conforming front yard setback on the property located on nineteen A. Born Street in Reading. Unless there's an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the Butters list, except to say that the Butters are notified. That's where the Select Board, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessor's Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, Members and Associate Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the Planning Boards of Wakeville, Lynnfield, North Reading, Stonemorton, and Wellington. Testimony given before this board is taken on the road. So if anyone here on the Zoom meeting this evening would like to speak on this case, uh, please stand or please raise your right hand, I guess, and let's take, make the following statement. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. And the answer is I do.
I do.
I do. Okay. I assume you're Kristen and, uh, Jeffrey?
Yeah.
Then we will, uh, turn the, uh, meeting over to you at this time to have you tell us what you want to do here. Okay?
Yes.
I have your application open, and I can share the screen if you so wish.
Yeah, you are, you are asking for a variance, which is, which is a very, very difficult approval to get. So in the course of your discussion and presentation, uh, if we'd kindly address the four criteria as well for a variance, okay?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we right now have a structure in the front. The stairs are falling apart. It needs to be replaced, and since we moved in twelve years ago, we've just wanted to put some sort of structure on the front. And both of us grew up with front porches. You know, it's just kind of a thing that we think we would enjoy, our children would enjoy, our neighbors. I think it'll add value to the house. With everything going on, we've been, you know, outside more and neighbors walking by and, you know, just talking more and meeting more neighbors, and I just feel like it, you know, would be a great thing to have to sit out, like I said, with neighbors and adding value because the existing structure has to come down, and this is what we've been waiting to do. The problem is, is the setback.
So we're looking for four feet from the town, um, to put the structure on.
Could you address the four criteria, please? I think, I could think, uh, Andrew's got it on the screen.
So by adding a farmer's porch to the front of the house will have no impact on soil conditions or topography of land. Physical location of original structure is already at twenty feet from front landline. We would like our farmer's porch on the front of the house, no other alternate alternative to build farmer's porch on the side of the house. The farmer's porch will also protect front foundation from heavy rain seeping into the basement and ice buildup on the front walkway. Farmer's porch will add character and curb appeal to both the house and the neighborhood. The farmer's porch will not be substantially different to public neighborhoods' front porches. We're seeking four feet relief from front setback.
Okay. Mark, you have any comment to start this session?
I would. I want to hold my comment, but with your, with your approval, Mr. Chairman, I would like for the board to come back to me before they vote, please.
Okay. All right, I'll start with Eric.
All right, well, it's a variance, so it's more difficult to get than a special permit, uh, which is what the prior, where the prior applicants were looking for. With the variance, you need to get all four of the criteria that you filled out with the variance criteria. And almost always, that first criteria is the tripping block for everyone looking for a variance. Because what it asks is to describe the circumstances relating to the soil condition or topography, which especially affect the land, but do not generally affect the land around that. So I guess what we have to figure out is, what is, apart from the fact that you are already at the, uh, the setback from the street, what other dimensions of the the land, the topography, would, you know, allow like a deviation from the zoning? Because, you know, usually, kind of like the classic example is if you have a giant rock or ledge that like will restrict where you can actually build on the property. And, you know, the fact that the building envelope of the existing property is right there at the, uh, front yard setback, to my mind, doesn't necessarily, um, you know, I guess, meet that criteria. Not that I'm saying it couldn't. I mean, we could certainly discuss it more, but just the way that you framed it here. And then also how not obtaining it would substantially impact you financially or otherwise. Those are always, you know, like I said, the the two hardest ones, and, you know, it's always, um, you know. It's always problematic for me as a board owner to tell somebody that, no, it's your property, but no, you can't do that. But the zoning bylaws have these performance standards that set what people can and can't do. And to get some sort of relief from them, to get an exception to the rule. Like I said, all four of these need to be met. So since I am only a board member and not an advocate, uh, one way or the other, I'll just point out those are two potential issues that I see with the project right now. But I'm not saying yes or no right now. I'm just pointing out I haven't, I haven't made up my mind on those first two yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
You don't mind if I just have one question. On the, uh, the sections of the setbacks, and the side setbacks in in our district is fifteen, and I believe the back, uh, setback is fifteen. Why is the front setback twenty feet from, um, the property line? I walk around the, my neighborhood, um, a lot. I have two dogs and we walk a lot. And I see hundreds of houses in Reading that don't even come close to being setback twenty feet. And I know, you know, those houses were built years ago or whatever, but it's not like I am putting it, you know, something that's gonna be an eyesore, uh, for the neighborhood or something. I'm trying to do a little curb appeal. I'm only asking for four feet, um, as to go to like top, topography on the land. And, um, I don't know if there's any ledge under there that I that I cannot build because I can't start digging until I get a permit from you folks. The other thing is, is I'm I'm asking for a front porch. Can I put the front porch on the side of my house? That wouldn't be a front farmer's porch. Is there any give back to those questions?
Uh, so twenty feet seems to be the normal front setback in most zones. Besides business A in the A eighty district. Like you said, there's a whole bunch of legal, non-conforming structures that could have been built prior to whenever that zoning was written. The reasons for twenty feet, I don't know what safety concerns and thoughts went into that years and years and years ago. But that's just the way the bylaw is, and any new development has to meet that. Or whatever zone bylaw setbacks there are in their zone.
Okay, maybe, there may be a lot of properties in this town that were built years and years ago when the by, on very small lots, where they don't meet the current setbacks for, I mean, the current bylaw setbacks, because those have changed, uh, over the years. And so in that case, most of those properties are, they're considered grandfathered. Okay? But when you want to make some changes to those properties, unfortunately, you're stuck with being evaluated on those changes versus the current bylaws.
Right.
Okay?
We understand.
That's the way it is. Now, my understanding, well, I'll I'll go back to the other board members for comment, and I'll save mine for the, at the end. Nick, you have any comment?
Yeah, just, um, oh, I really echo a lot with, um, Eric said about, um, the ledge example. I mean, I, I, I don't think personally, um, maybe you didn't quite understand the first criteria, but it's it's not so much what your project is gonna have an impact on the soil. It's more of how the topography affects your decision to place what you placed, where you placed it. I think Eric also said pretty well, I mean, the Z B A, we're not a monolith on the zoning regulations. We just enforce it. And while I personally, I don't see any particular problem with what you're trying to do, we are tasked and sometimes put in an uncomfortable position to to enforce, uh, the zoning regs that the town, that the residents have created and decided as a community, these are the standards they want to see in their town. And I think Eric also mentioned, you have to meet all four. Three out of four isn't gonna cut it. So so right now, unless I can hear something further from the applicant about unique topography where that farmer's porch is, I don't think, from what I hear right now, that the first criteria is met. That's all I have to add.
Okay. Jamie, comment?
Actually, I I have a a question first. I couldn't quite tell from the drawing. Is the facade of the house exactly twenty feet from the street? And if the answer to that question is yes, how far from the street are the current steps? I think there are two steps or 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 three.
So the, so the step comes out and then it goes down.
Right.
Aggressively down. And where the bottom step, so it's, it's a structure, um, of brick stairs and, um,
railroad ties.
So where that comes out is where the step is six feet, and that's where the steps for the porch will end, is where the steps for this structure end. I know it's not grandfathered in and it's not a structure, but we're not going out any further than where the actual stairs end right now. I know it's not grandfathered in and it's not a structure, but we're not going out any further than where the actual stairs end right now.
Um, Andrew, can you pull up that drawing?
So the, the plot plan, um, that they had done by Mr. Farrell, um. On the, on the front of the house, it's not, that's showing what we'd like to do. Um, it doesn't show the existing stairs that we have on the house. Uh, because there's, there's no. I, I don't know why he didn't put them in, but I think because he, we're doing this as a proposal from porch. Um, the stairs, they basically come out of the main entrance of the, uh, of the house. Um, there are four steps going down and they come out exactly six feet. Um, I don't want to go any further than that because I actually like the distance that we have.
So the, so the farmer's porch would come out to exactly where the existing steps stop, correct?
Exactly, correct, yep, we're not going any further than that.
So what you're really looking at is just making it the entire frontage of the house?
Correct.
Yes.
So those existing steps are, are, don't meet the setback requirement?
Correct.
Correct, but they were here when we, when we purchased the house.
Right, right. So you could rebuild those steps in the existing footprint, obviously.
The steps, yes.
Yes, but can I go thirty feet, thirty-four feet across?
Right.
And what, a roof on it?
Put a roof on it.
The steps don't have a roof on it now, do they?
No, they do not.
You, I think, Andrew or, 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 or Mark, um. Could they put a roof over those steps now without a variance, since the footprint is already there?
I will defer to Mark as he has his hand raised.
So steps don't count towards setbacks. Once you put a roof over them, they're considered a structure.
Okay.
So then they must comply to the setback. Steps themselves can be in the setbacks.
So, okay, thank you. Um, the, the other just observation, I did drive by and take a look and is, I didn't measure, but as far as I could tell. Every other house on that street meets or seems to meet or exceed that twenty foot setback. I didn't see any that were within that setback zone. Just as an observation.
Do you know that, uh, Mr. Mrs. Aboard, do you know whether any of those on the street? Look like yours?
That we have three house, we have our house and the two houses going down towards Bancroft, they were all built in nineteen eighty-two. Uh, they're all basically the same house. I think we all have the same frontage, um, actually, I think even going up the whole side of Auburn Street, I think everybody has basically the same. Frontage, the houses are all basically in a line.
Yeah, that, that's what it looked like to me.
Correct.
So if, if we, if you put in. The, the farmer's porch, it would, it, it would be different and then. Um, everybody else would, would, uh, would, would, uh, perhaps, or, or many other people would. Perhaps want the same thing.
Well, I, I know a couple of houses going up already have porches that are, you know, they're either covered porches or they're actually on the house already. Uh, there are a couple of houses that do have staircases with, uh, small roofs, uh, over the, just the, the landing. Um, going up the street. So what is that considered the same thing is that if they don't have a setback, but they still have. Uh, that roof over it, even though it's only like a, say a four foot pad coming out of their house. With a roof, is that still considered a structure? Well, I don't think it would be an awning because an awning is usually fabric where these are made out of, you know, either wood or some type of building material. Then is that considered a roof structure?
If it is, we have to assume that it needs a setback, because I don't think a variance was issued.
Non-conforming, there's many options that it could or could not be.
I think he said it was new construction, but I'm.
Oh.
Misunderstood.
Sorry.
I mean, at this point, we realize that we're in front of you because there are rules and there are, um. It's, you know, it's just something that we both grew up with, it's something that. You know, unfortunately.
We want to enjoy.
Yeah, I just want to enjoy sitting outside, seeing my neighbors. Um, I feel like a lot of the houses built right now are built as cookie cutters, they don't have any character to them, they don't have. You know, almost none of them have front porches, people aren't doing front porches anymore. Everybody wants it to look new and square and the best space they can get, I guess. Um, so it's, it's just something we, we wanted to, you know, put on and for our kids to enjoy and. You know, make the house look better, make the neighborhood look better. And be able to sit out there and enjoy. You know, what's out there.
Okay, thank you, uh, Hillary?
Hi, so, um, I, my husband and I walked past here a couple of times in the last week. And, um, I do notice how on your, is it the second, um, criteria where you're talking about? There's some water infiltration and that your, your front, um, I can see how the water. Cause it's on a downhill slope that the water can kind of run down the street, which street is it, Parkview?
Uh, uh, we're on Auburn. Oh, from Parkview?
From Parkview straight directly toward your house.
Correct, yes.
And I see how that and how your roof runoff would come back. It doesn't drain away from the house, but it could come straight off and back into your foundation. So I can understand how that, how a protection of a roof would be beneficial to your existing structure. Um, but in your meeting of the criteria as being something you want. Whereas it's not something that's required. Um, it's hard for me, I'm sorry, I'm looking at your house on the other screen, I'm not speaking to someone over there. Um, and I'm on the Google Earth looking at it and, um, so. I can understand that that is one of your criteria. To protect your existing structure. But the way that you've answered the variance criteria, um, I don't. I don't think it qualifies as something that I would vote for a variance at this time. Okay, thank you.
Bob?
Yes, thank you, Si. Uh, okay, I, I'll go through the four criteria, how I feel about those. Uh, the homeowner or the, the petitioner, we're noting before about, uh. Their setbacks and how, uh, other people have, you know, have setbacks that are closer to the street, etc. As you walk around town, etc. And I just wanted to note that the applicants themselves have a legal, what's considered a legal non-conforming law. They do not meet, uh, the frontage requirement of a hundred feet. And they do not meet the lot area of fifteen thousand square feet that's required today. Now, I'm assuming that back in nineteen eighty-two, when the house was built. The builder was allowed, he got his permits. And that was a legal house back then, but today it's considered legal non-conforming, that law. So there's a, there's a particular answer or, or an example of how something comes into being. Uh, where the bylaws are different today than what they were back then. And in regards to the four criteria, uh, I don't see. How, uh, the topography, uh, or soil conditions, etc., have any, uh, impact on your proposal. Uh, the desire of a farmer's porch, just because you would like one. Does not warrant a variance in this, it's. It, it, you have to show just cause why you, uh, need that. And that the topography and soil conditions warrant that too. Uh, a hardship, I would have difficulty with that. Uh, yes, you might consider it a hardship, is it a severe hardship, a substantial hardship? You're, eh, by not doing this, it would not make the house non-livable or non-habitable. Uh, it's still going to be the same house, you're not going to change the value of it, etc. Uh, it's just something you would desire and that does not warrant a variance. I think it would have a minimal impact to the neighborhood, I don't know if it would have, uh, you know, that it would, in fact, maybe an improvement. I don't think it would, uh, impact the neighborhood too much. But I do think in criteria four, that it would seriously, uh. Appear to degrade the intent of the town's bylaws of having the twenty foot setback in your frontage. And you're asking for, uh, an encroachment of four feet into that. And I don't think you would, uh, meet, uh, criteria four, so I, I, I'm having issues with, uh. Three of the criteria right off on that. So I'll, uh. I'll let it sit at that right now, Si, and I know Mark wanted to say something, maybe before you commented or maybe after you commented. Thank you.
You want to let me talk first, Mark, and then you go after me?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, if I read the plot plan. What I'm. Concluding from that is your current setback is twenty-two feet. Right.
Correct.
You're going, you're going to go, you're going to go into that, so you're really looking for a new frontage of sixteen feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, the other question I had was, or comment I had was, uh, you, you talked about basement seepage. Are you experiencing any such thing now?
So, I don't know if you guys noticed it about eight o'clock tonight, we just had a major downpour. Uh, for about fifteen, twenty minutes. Um, that I haven't been able to go downstairs to look, um, to see if I did get any water in the basement. But those are the storms when we have the, the, the quick, uh, heavy rain like that for a long period of time. Um, I will get, uh, water in the basement, which then I have to spend hours, you know, vacuuming up in different areas. Um, it typically comes through the front of the house. Um, right in the middle of the house, so probably where the stairs are now, that, that does not have any covering on it. Um, if I, if I had a front porch, that would bring the water six feet away from my foundation. And push it off to the side of the, uh, the yacht.
In the course of your thinking about a porch, have you thought about potentially just adding a? Roof over the current steps?
That's.
Well, that's what probably our, you know, I mean, we want to go big first. Um, you know, to see if we could get the farmer's porch, um, if we don't, then our second step would be to. Um, I think the town does allow a four-foot, uh, pad outside your main door with a covering over it. If I'm not mistaken, uh, that would be our. Alternative plan.
Well, I tend to.
And again, I wouldn't know if that would completely solve the problem with the, uh, water issue.
Yeah.
Cause that's only four feet.
I tend to share the concerns expressed by the other members of the board. Uh, I personally have no problem with. The third criteria and frankly. Not as bad with, not so much with the fourth one, but the first two are really tough. And, uh, it's hard to justify. As I look at it as well. Uh, going along with compliance with those two. But I'll leave it at that at the moment and I'll turn it over to Mark for his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, unfortunately, I was going to ask the applicants a question and unfortunately, they answered it already. I was going to ask them, um, the, the houses adjacent to them on each side, what their setbacks were. I, there is a little, there is a little note in the bylaw about adjacent properties and their setback. Um, but if they're, it would have to work out that one was at, like on the left side here, that was twelve feet from the road. On the right side here, that was sixteen feet from the road, and then you take your twenty, you do the average and bring it down to sixteen. But if they're all at about twenty, that, that's not going to help you. I, I was, I was hoping that, um, you might had a good answer for that, but unfortunately, it is what it is on those other houses. Can I, can I run outside with a tape measure? Um. You can try.
The one, the one to the right of us, I, I don't think has that much because they have the sidewalk. And then their house is, their steps come out, so their front yard is small. The, the one to the left of us, I believe is the same as ours. It might be smaller, but I believe it's the same.
So you would actually have an option here if it would require some money and time on your part. Um, i- if you could get a certified plot plan for each of the other properties verifying their setbacks. And we can do the average, and if the average can bring you at sixteen feet. You wouldn't need a variance. But.
Anything?
For this front farmer's porch. Okay. But, but that, but like if I do the averages in my mind. One has to be at twelve and one has to be at sixteen already, if you're in the twenty to twenty-two. So, I mean, if, if they're not close, it, it might just be a waste of time and money.
But they could certainly go out just on their own and measure, and if it is close, then go to the expense of, of getting a certified plot plan. But it's not even close, then, then it wouldn't make any sense.
They have a certified plot plan in their house.
Going to say, they may already have one.
There actually might be one at the town hall in the public records.
So. It's worth considering.
You'd need it from your neighbors, you'd need it from your neighbor's plots, not just your own.
Right, correct, okay. So, so can we ask the board not to vote tonight?
Well, no, we can get a variance.
The only other comment I would make before you get to that point is, uh, looking at what you want to do. Forget the bylaw at the moment, it aesthetic, aesthetic, aesthetically, I'll get that word out. Pretty good. I mean, it, it's, I would think it will enhance the, the, the beauty of the property, okay? But we are stuck with the bylaws.
Right.
And now you're not totally compliant, I think Mark's suggestion is a good one. That would be nice to get some kind of a certified plot plan, that your neighbors may already have one or. There may be something existing at the town hall, I don't know. Uh, that would maybe support your case, as Mark would say, for not even having to come to us. Uh, but I think that's worth a look see on your, your part. Uh, if we voted tonight, I think the flavor of what you're hearing is not very good.
No.
Okay? So we could continue this meeting to some point. To give you the opportunity to gather that information. And then review this again. Okay, we could do that.
Okay.
As opposed to voting tonight.
Correct.
You could go forward with Mark's idea, even without this application being open as well, um, just so you know. It wouldn't have any direct.
Mark's application works out, then we don't even have to come to the board, is that correct, Mark?
Correct.
Okay.
I hear Mark saying, yeah.
Alright, so we'll, we'll check out that avenue.
Okay.
Would you like to, Si, if you want to explain the two things I could do, continue or withdraw, it's up to you.
So we can withdraw without prejudice? Yes.
Is that what you'd like to do?
Yep.
Okay. You gotta, you gotta frown on your face, Hillary.
Well, I, are they withdrawing it or are they continuing it?
No, withdrawing, I think they said.
Yeah, they can withdraw and still go forward with Mark's idea if they.
Right, and then I can come back to the board if I have to, is that correct?
Well, you'd have to put a brand new application.
You have to put in a brand new application.
Oh, okay, alright, so can we, alright.
That's why I had the frown, I was.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
No, that's okay.
The only day we don't know what to continue it to is, you know, I don't know how long this time it's going to take you to do that.
We, we don't know, Si, and, and I do think. We, we don't know, Si, and, and I do think we have to give a certain date when we continue something. And then it's, and then it's continued, continued or whatever, but it has to be a certain date.
Yeah.
And I just would like to add, you still have to open to public comment and close if.
You might want that, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Let's just take a moment here, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here?
Alex is still here, I don't know if he has any comments.
No, we have no comment. We're their neighbors and just, we would be in favor of putting the front porch on because I think it would look better. But that sounds like that's not a, a benefit to the approval of this, so.
Thank you. That's it? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Uh, okay, is, you, what, what date would you folks be comfortable with to continue this to?
June seventeenth is the next hearing.
The next meeting. Could you pull something off in that period of time?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, then we'll, you, you're asking us to continue this case until June seventeenth?
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion for that?
Show move, Si.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Anybody?
I'll second it.
Oh, there you are. All in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous, okay. Folks again.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Maybe not.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thanks. There's one subject I'd like to cover before we close, before we adjourn.
Is, well, but you first.
Okay. There are four of you whose terms expired, or is expiring at the end of this month. Myself, Eric, Hillary and Jamie.
Wow.
Are you all continuing?
Yes.
Hillary, yes. Jamie?
Um, I'm undecided.
You're undecided? Okay. Eric?
I've actually notified the town that I will not be.
Okay. And I'm not too, so we got a problem there. Okay.
So that's what was going, the start of my discussion.
Your turn.
Kind of bears the question of, we have a few new applications in the works. Though we can advertise for July if the board wished to go forward with them. But it sounds like, I originally thought Jamie was rerunning. So we would have at max four people, which we would need for every hearing to be able to administer a vote if we were to go forward with any new applications. We have not received any ZBA applications as of yet, though they've been posted for both Si and I believe Eric's positions as they've notified that they won't be continuing. So Jamie, if you aren't continuing, if you could put that notice in sooner than later, allows us to find someone sooner than later as well, so.
I, I have, I have an interview with the Select Board Subcommittee on Volunteers next week. And I'll prob, I will know af, after that interview.
Great. Okay. So I guess I will leave it to, we have one application on June seventeenth, which you are all eligible to attend and vote now, nineteen Auburn. I guess I will ask the, I guess we can't really have hearings in July until we know that we have at least four members, so. Yeah, guess that answers my own question.
The only other comment I would make, Andrew, and I've made this comment to the town previously, is that I know that my leaving, and now with Eric leaving, we're putting the zoning board in a predicament. And I expressed a willingness to carry on for another three months to give them the time to find replacements, but I have not heard anything about that, okay?
I remember that.
Still willing to do that, but I'm not signing up for more than three months.
Yeah, I remember that request as well. I haven't heard anything on it. I can double-check with the Subcommittee Volunteer Committee, whatever the name is. I can double-check with them on how that could work or would work, if at all possible. But like you said, that's not typically how it's done.
I know.
So I will get back to you as soon as possible on that.
And the other thing I think we should put on the agenda for the seventeenth is the selection of a new chair and co-chair.
I was hoping to do that July first with any new members.
That's usually what we've done in the past, Andrew, you're right, is wait till the first July meeting to do that.
I'm just trying to count on my fingers. So the, the board, a full board is five members, correct?
Seven members.
Five members, two associates.
Okay.
Right.
The five members as of July first would, would be Nick, Bob.
And you, if.
Me, if I go ahead, and then that still leaves one opening, am I seeing that?
Yep.
Understand that correctly?
Yep.
Yep.
But four people is enough for, three people is technically enough for quorum. But our special permit votes and variance votes require four in favor because it has to be a super majority of the five, so.
Right.
Though three is quorum, we technically need four to issue any vote, so.
What, are they, beside, I guess, Hillary and myself, you're saying no other applications were submitted for ZBA? I, I misunderstood, so that, i- in that situation, that would make me more likely than not to, to, to pursue the, the membership. I, I thought I was, I didn't know I was necessary to fill out the board, but if I am, then I, I would be, I'd be hesitant not to, to continue, not to continue.
Yes, so thank, thank you for that and it would still be your choice, whatever is best for you. So we don't want to push anyone to anything they don't want to do. But the board would need as much help, so.
Thank you.
Also try to fill the full-time membership position, not just the associate position.
Any other comment on that subject?
Uh, Si, other businesses, and I know we've usually done this in the past. What are we going to do, and Andrew may, uh, want to comment on this too. What about a written decision on the one case we have tonight?
Yep, um, so I believe Bob, if you could write the decision for the withdrawal of sixty-one summer.
I can do that.
Someone made the motion on thirty veil.
And then we have thirty veil, right.
Bob made the first motion as well.
Bob made that motion as well, so.
I did.
Bob, if you could draft that decision and send it to Si and I, because I will have to connect on the best way for you to sign that. I don't know if you can print it at home and sign it, or if you want me to mail it to you and mail it back. We can kind of connect on how that would work, so.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I will print it out, or let, let's say this, I will write them up. I can send it to you electronically, Andrew. Should I set, should I send it to Si electronically as the chair also? And then if he wanted to, he could print it out and sign it and send it to you?
Yes, that is.
That could work, yeah.
Okay, that would be my hopes. Do you have a hard copy plan set with you, Si, that you could stamp?
Not, not at the moment.
Okay, I can get you those and either drop them off or mail them to your house.
Okay.
Okay.
Or we could have a transfer point somewhere.
Yeah, that's fine, whatever.
As long as you wear a mask and gloves, it's all, I'll, I'll trust you.
There you go, mask and gloves, hood of the car.
Yeah, yeah, you got that right.
Just to confirm, it sounds like because we are unaware of the status of members in July, I'm not going to advertise any hearing, new hearings for the first meeting in July as of yet. Perhaps the second meeting in July will know, have a bit more detail for and confirmation for, but as of now.
What, what, what's the notification, fourteen days?
Yes, two weeks prior to.
Yeah.
Well, if, I mean, we'll know by the seventeenth, I think, by our next meeting. So you would be able to post after that for the first meeting in July, right?
No, the seventeenth would be the date of my first legal ad. I would have to know before then, so I'm fine, it's fine to continue to the second week in July. Because I think that just gives us time for more confirmation, so.
I do have one other question since I've interrupted. I did go on the ten website today to try, try and, try and check the zoning bylaws. I thought I had a copy, but I don't. And when I went on the ten website, I got a nice screen of the front page, but all the other pages were blank.
That's happened to me a few times, but I've refreshed and it's worked, so.
Okay, I might, I, I'll try a few more times and if I'm unsuccessful, I might bother you to get, to help me out, Andrew.
Yeah, I might be able to send you a PDF version.
If you, if you already have one, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll take a look tomorrow.
No rush, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Any other discussion this evening, gentlemen? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm not a gentleman, by the way, but. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I will second the.
Thank you. All in favor, it's got to be unanimous, yay.
Aye.
Are you all available on the seventeenth, just so I can ask now?
I think, I think it would be desirable if we could all make it.
Great.
Some of us, it's our last meeting.
Yep.
I know right now, yeah.
Yep.
I would, I would like to, yeah, and I know you have no control over it, Andrew, but I'd like to get rid of this Zoom as soon as we can and just have regular town hall meetings.
Sure, we all do.
I know you probably do too, okay.
Thank you all very much, went very well tonight and. You as well.
Yeah, stay healthy.
You too.
Bye, guys.
Bye.